Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells Planning Board Meeting for Monday, May 5th. The first item for discussion this evening will be to review the minutes of April 21st. Did anyone have any corrections, additions, or deletions to page one? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, or 10? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
So move, second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous. The next items on the agenda are public hearings. How we conduct our public hearing is hearings is we allow the applicant to come forward, tell the public, the people at home and the board what they propose to do. Once they state what they propose to do, the public has the opportunity to question them through the board. Once the public hearing is closed, there'll be no more public comment this evening. So the first one is Starbucks. Is there a representative here, please? Welcome. Have a seat, tell everybody who you are, please.
So Eric Dubey, Troyum Engineering, representing the owner on this.
Welcome.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Would you like to tell the board and people at home and in the audience what you propose to do and where?
Yeah, so Wells Plaza, basically we have next adjacent to the car wash, there is a, an old parking lot or a parking lot still exists that is basically unused at this point, so that lot is to be split off, which is, Mr. Livingston is showing that right now.
I got my pointer too, sorry about that.
And then we are proposing to develop that into a new Starbucks drive-through coffee shop in that lot. So we're actually going to reduce the impervious on the entire lot. We have, so the Wells Plaza Drive is out here, Car Wash is here. You're gonna be able to enter the site, you can either go into a parking or be able to have enough stacking power around to the drive-through. The building is located here and then you actually, the drive-through pickup is here. You'll be able to drive around and then, and then the exit to the site is essentially here, back onto Wells Plaza. We're adding in some screening up on this side against the existing, I guess residential use. Route 1 that is up on this side is higher than our site, just the way the existing landscape works on that. And I think that's, that's about it, pretty simple proposal on that. Paging down, so we're also doing a connector into the Wells site with, from the sidewalk itself into the plaza. So that'll be constructed as well to be able to connect the two route 1 traffic for pedestrian use.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments for any members in the public? Any members of the board? Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous, the public hearing is now closed. The next one is Wells Plaza and I would assume you are representing them as well.
We are at this point, so again Eric Dubey, Troyum Engineering. So one of the requirements for the lot split off, which is basically this existing parking lot, is that you have to amend the previously approved site plan for the actual lot split off. So that's what we are doing for that particular lot and that's why we are in front of you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? Members of the board, hearing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous, public hearing is now closed. The next item on the agenda is North Star Cantina. Hi, welcome.
My name is David Angenin, I'm with Texas Grace Kitchen, which is the food truck. That is part of the equation of North Star Cantina. Marina was going to be here tonight, but she got caught up traveling, so this is her building and her, kind of her party to run the site plan adjustment. But I can fill you in on any questions if you have.
Just sort of tell the public and the board what she plans to do.
So we're going to take the, essentially the front half of that building, put in a bar to run in conjunction with the food truck. And we are going to run a year-round, kind of Texas barbecue bar and food truck in the front of that building. One of the big changes we have to move, what have to make is to move the trailer out of where it is currently operating. Kind of into a side yard area of the building, we have to excavate a little bit of earth, but it gets the trailer out of the way of everything, makes it a lot safer for customers to come up and order. Kind of makes the site work a lot more cohesively.
Also putting in more outside dining, correct?
In that little side patio, yeah, that, and I don't know that that has ever actually been used, but we intend to use it, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for any members of the public? Any members of the board? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous, public hearing is now closed.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere, we'll be seeing you later on.
Yep.
Go, right now.
You're next on the agenda, fantastic. Mike, you have comments for us?
Yes, in the memo we prepared, the first item was considering any comments, there were none. Second item is to review some of the compliance items that we've discussed on the site several meetings, occasions now involving the sidewalk. Couple of points to mention is, there was additional pavement discovered on the property that had been there, was just covered up with different debris and organic material. Part of that is gonna be actually torn up and re-vegetated because not that, we paid the area we added to the site. The site exceeded its lot coverage. And there was proposed news, new lot coverage in a couple of locations. So to keep it in compliance with lot coverage requirements, there's gonna be a bit of gravel here that's removed, replaced with grass. A portion of the old discovered pavement will have to be torn up and grassed there. There are trees proposed to be planted along the streets. This is, actually has Route 1 frontage, Sanford Road frontage and this old private road along the back is street frontage as well, so there are several trees proposed to meet our landscaping requirements. As discussed, this area is being graded to be flatter. There's gonna be that open patio area in the back. They were able to reconfigure some of the parking to gain enough parking spaces to now have the application be for 44 seats, I believe it is, both indoor and outdoor for the restaurant use. It's gonna operate with the food truck in the lounge area as a standard restaurant use is what it falls under our definitions now. That's all documented as notes on the plan now. So one of the several items for the board to vote on is the landscape buffers that I just generally went over. The first one is the Route 1 buffer. The existing pavement is pretty much the entire Route 1 frontage. They're not proposing any changes in that area, so the first item is for the board to consider just the existing conditions as remaining suitable.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
Before you vote?
Yeah.
What about sidewalks going up the, I think, isn't that a sidewalk area?
It is, it's in, it's in the sidewalk overlay district area, but they're not doing anything that triggers the actual construction of the sidewalks. We had them show the future potential sidewalks on the plans as shown on the sidewalk plan.
What would have triggered the?
A new building.
A new building?
Yes.
Not a new use though?
No, not a new use, if they're renovating or doing a tear-down rebuild on more than 50% of the building, that's a trigger for the sidewalk to be constructed. Any new building is a trigger for sidewalks to be constructed, but just a change of use doesn't. But we did have them add a note to the plan that specifically said that, so that in the future, you know, everyone's on notice that if a new building does occur, that sidewalks might be needed. And that's where they're showing on the, on the sidewalk master plan.
Well, Mike, you talked about buffers and then you talked about the existing plan. Have a problem with the existing parking as shown there. Spaces next to the gas station parking lot are not available for a restaurant because they're occupied 24/7 by the neighbor next door, so I don't think we can count those in.
Well, that's her property, the people that need to move the vehicles out of the gas station, not.
Right, but you could have, so if you had a trailer there, then, you know, I'm saying if you, if you put a building there, a construction trailer, something like that, if those spaces aren't available, then you can't count them. They have to be available.
The way we addressed that on the site plan was that each of these spaces has to have a sign in front and saying for the use of the customers of this facility. So the two property owners have to discuss that issue, get those parking spaces cleared out and they have to put wheel stops and signs in front of each of them to hopefully address that issue.
We actually have a good relationship with the Browns, so it's, we've essentially given them the heads up, like they gotta do something about those cars.
That's Browns, the problem to move them.
And I think that some of those cars go around towards these spaces too, so the same situation is there too.
It is, it's not just cars, it's piles of tires and stuff like that too, so.
Like, but that's on Browns to clean up their problem.
I understand that, but until that's gone, I mean, how can you count those spots, those vehicles? That stuff has been there for years. I mean, granted, you can show a plan and the, hey, it looks great and everything, but if the stuff's never gonna move, then you can't count those as parking spots.
Well, that, that would, you know, be an issue if those are not available to customers and they're using all 44 seats and they don't have parking for it. You know, that's something that the code office would have to look at eventually.
Can we, can we put a note on the plan or put a condition that they can't open until all the parking spaces are available?
Well, they can't get an occupancy on the new use and put these wheel stops and signs are in place. So, I mean, that certainly pushes the issue a little better.
On the flip side, they need that plan to show that if they ever want to take legal action against the neighbor, they need that plan to show that that's what belongs there.
And one other item that they added to the plan, it's not a requirement by our ordinance, but they did label possible fence along the property line and they noted here on the plan. So, you know, eventually if they can't work something out, you know, a fence may get installed along the property line and, and these things.
I think that should be a requirement.
Isn't there a discussion of a fence around that patio area also because of the alcohol? Can't see that depicted, we need that depicted on the plan?
No, that was a discussion and that's something they have to meet for getting their liquor license.
So we don't need that on the plan?
So it can, yeah, it doesn't need to be on the plan under our ordinance for site plan, but to get their liquor license, they'll have to have a method of coordinating off that area.
That particular patio is, is like five feet under grade, which is why we have to excavate out the back. So we will have to have a fence.
Yeah, we'll have to remove the retaining wall.
Yeah, part of it will get retained, a part of it will be removed and part of it will stay. So we'll have kind of a natural five-foot tall barrier on one side, but yes, we will have to comply with the liquor license stuff.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we would note it other than we have already, because you know, for removing of the vehicles, our customers.
Well, the easiest thing would be if they agreed to, to want to put a fence there, I think that would.
Fence would certainly, yeah.
But then again.
You can't penalize the applicant because Brown is violating the law.
Yeah, it's more of a civil land dispute issue and that's a tough one for us to.
Sorry, boss.
Put a fence across there if they have a, an easement?
You can't put a fence across where there is an easement.
Well, no, not where there's an easement, but.
They're starting in the corner where the easement starts.
Yeah. That 90-degree corner.
Right to there.
Yeah.
And it would be a mutual benefit not to put this there for, for the Browns because they have stuff behind the building and there's only a three or four foot gap between the building and the property line. So you, you'd think there'd be a way to work things out inlookably, but.
We've been friendly thus far.
What's with the fence? The fence, Browns couldn't access the backside of their property either.
Things to happen to then tell the others, okay, now it's time, now you gotta move it.
Break down the hill into the water.
So the motion was for the landscape buffer, which has nothing to do with that parking lot.
Yeah, we're taking each buffer separately, so that was just specifically a Route 1 buffer?
Yeah. Did we get a second?
Second.
There was a second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Now, the next one is for the buffer along Sanford Road or Route 109. And that has, you know, some nice landscaping already in front, in the right-of-way that the town installed and maintains. But to meet our landscaping buffer requirement, they are proposing to plant two trees here and another one at the intersection. And this whole area will be, will be grass and the area that's being regraded and the retaining walls removed, that's grass in that area too.
No, just a question on that, there was talk at the last meeting, Marina herself brought up about a fence there. I know there's a current split rail fence, but I thought the intention was to have more than that.
That's the existing split rail fence that the town maintains. But that's, I think, what was discussed and whether, I don't think the board made a decision on it, but that creates a visual barrier and certainly not a guardrail. But there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of landscaping distance between the actual edge of pavement and that. Ideally, eventually there would be a curb sidewalk there, which is a good deterrent too. I mean, that doesn't exist now, don't know when it would happen, but.
Mike, what's the ordinance say as far as trees planted along the property line? Isn't it every 25 feet or something?
Actually, the ordinance for the landscape buffer just says trees, so more than one.
Yeah, I think we need to see a couple more trees and up further on their property.
We do have that big.
Yeah, but that's on our, on the town property. I'm talking about right on their property, it'll give a little more screening and a little more landscaping appeal. You know, a couple maple trees, three-inch maples or something.
Yeah, because this is a, is a nice tree, but it's on town, well, it's not on town land and.
It's on state land and if the state comes in and cuts it down, then there's nothing.
I was about to say, we have a license with the state, so we can maintain the fence irrigation system and these plantings, but it's based on if DOT has a project, they can come in and remove it.
Yeah, so if we put two more trees in between those, the last two there, we don't wanna put one down in the intersection area, but of that area there, give a couple more trees. You know, when they do finally cut it down, there'll be some landscaping there already.
So the motion will be approved a 109 landscaping with five shade trees to be installed.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
And that, and the other landscape buffer to approve is along Brook Lane. And that's a street as well, so it has our 15-foot landscape buffer. And they're proposing one tree here, this tree's at the intersection, so it's really like two trees there, but we already just counted it as one of the five here. So there's one tree along Brook Lane.
And that one tree meets the ordinance?
Well, if you count this and this one together, it would be trees. Because that's, the ordinance doesn't, because it doesn't specify a number of trees, doesn't specify a distance in between, it just is plural, so.
That's why we have to approve it, two shade trees.
So like one more in between right about there or?
On Brook Lane, you're, you're showing two shade trees here.
There's also a power line in the middle of all that.
There's what?
Oh, there is an overhead line.
There's a, there's a power pole that had to plow that parking lot. And it gets right in your way, so if we throw another tree back.
Yeah, another tree.
I mean, that's just causing problems in the future.
Some low shrubs or something?
I'm good with calling that trees.
Yeah.
Me too.
That, that stuff's gonna grow back up.
That's trees.
So let's make a motion of second.
I'll make a motion for landscape buffer on Brook Lane as suitable.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
And next item on the memo is for the board to consider granting a waiver for stormwater. The overall coverage is essentially the same. They're proposing to remove pavement closest to the Shoreland Zone, so that's an improvement to stormwater. It's all sheet flow conditions now, the high spot is right about in the middle. If sheet flows towards Route 1, it flows to the back. So we were recommending that the planning board consider granting that waiver.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Next item was for the applicant to get letters from the sanitary district, we did receive that today. The superintendent's been on vacation for a week, so we just got that today. We didn't receive one from the Wada District, but we were considering whether the board would consider a condition on the findings of fact to allow it prior to a building permit. But if, if you're gonna require the additional trees on Sanford Road, then we'll have to wait for a new plan to show that anyways. So it would be another two weeks before you could sign and approve the plan. And in that two weeks, we'll probably get the letter from the Wada District, so that can be addressed, you know, at, at the next meeting. Parking layout, we were just, we diverged in the parking when we were talking about the buffering. But we had made a few comments on wheel stops and signage to be required, hopefully to resolve that issue with the butter. We have two handicap spaces, they only needed one before, but now with the additional parking that was able to be fit on the, triggered two handicap spaces, so those are shown on the plan. Also note the fencing being optional along the butter. If the planning board thought any additional traffic information was needed, that's a determination you would make. You don't have to vote on it, if you wanted more traffic information, then you could vote on needing a particular item. But, you know, the original site was historically a 74-seat restaurant. So I think these uses are in line with that, so not expecting an increased traffic impact. So if the board wanted to have something, you could request it, if not, we can move on to the next item, which was just stating that future sidewalks are shown on the plan, but not required at this time. And they did add note 25 to, to note that on it. Some of the items described in note 20 were things that would needed to be, need to be done prior to occupancy and we touched upon that already, but, but just the pavement removal in the back to make the lot coverage work, the gravel installation for a couple of the new parking spaces, striping the parking spaces, painting the directional arrows in the parking area, the wheel stops that are specified in some of those parking spaces. So all those items would have to be done prior to an occupancy being issued. And that's all addressed in note 20. So the next item we had was for the board to consider finding the application as compliant. And I think with the determinations you made on the buffers, you could do so.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
And lastly, we have the findings of fact in the package for, for final approval, but I think if we're gonna require two new trees around Sanford Road, that, those would have to be added to the plan. And we get that Wada District letter and it would be in good shape for approval at the next meeting. But we need those two trees added.
We need an extension, are they still good?
No, they're still good. So if, yeah, no continuation is needed because they have 30 days since the public hearing and it's still within our timeframe, so I guess we just see you at the next meeting for final approval.
Obviously, very much like this.
Yes, yeah.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is Starbucks. Do we wanna work these together or do we wanna do them separately?
We did have different items to be voted on in each one, so we should do them separately.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Would you tell everybody who you are again, please?
Eric Dubey, Troyum Engineering.
Mike, you have comments for us?
Yes, the first item was any comments from the public and there were none. I did speak to the residential butter to the north today. He was considering coming to the meeting, but after we talked, he was happy with everything I described to him. So it's the residential occupant of this property up in this corner. He was happy to hear that the fence would be installed along the property line. He was happy to hear that this connection would be eliminated because there's a lot of public traffic that comes down there, interferes with his driveway. He thought overall the development of the parking lot would be a good thing because there's some activities that happen in that parking lot that aren't desirable. By having an established business there, that would be eliminated. So we got good comments from director butter. Did have a phone call last week and someone just concerned about, you know, traffic impacts and of course the board has discussed those previously and it's getting the main DOT traffic movement permit. So that, there was a, a call last week on that as well. We didn't talk about it at the public hearing, but there's some crosswalk improvements proposed for Mile Road. The proposal on the plans right now is to have an at-grade textured pavement, concrete material, painting it and adding two streetlights to make it more visible. DOT was more looking for a raised crosswalk there to slow people down in that area too. Public Works Department is not in favor of, of a raised mound there. So I guess we'll have to see what DOT mandates for that, it's really part of your DOT movement permit, so it's up to them. We do have a, a request in for an easement along the front for future sidewalk construction. If the Route 1 corridor project goes forward and the applicant has said they're willing to grant that easement to the town as well as providing money into a fund for future development of that sidewalk. That's noted on the plan. One item that, we, we did take this to the staff review committee for comments and the staff review committee is all the department heads. And the comments that came out from the fire department, they had concerns on the sharpness of this corner in getting a fire truck off the site. So that was, and that does look very tight. I mean, one thing you could do is, is look at the trucking releases and see if that can be met for a fire truck. It does look very difficult to get a fire truck out. So I did sketch up a couple of options that you could consider for that. You know, one would be to eliminate that, that area that has a sharp turn and go straight out potentially. Another option that was discussed by staff review would be to eliminate this and add an exit here that would combine with the exit from the drive-through. And that would be a, a clear radius coming in, wrapping around and getting out. So a couple of things to consider there. The turning radiuses coming off this corner may make it, but they're tight. But you could look at the turning radiuses first trucks and, and take a look at that. If, if this radius can't be met for a fire truck, then your only option probably would be to, to do this. But when you eliminate this lot coverage, it could probably free up and the parking spaces you'd lose here, you can make up over here.
Yep.
So just alternatives to that, with that, we can certainly talk directly with the fire chief on that as well, but.
Do they need access all four sides, including the parking lot, or can they get the other three sides?
Well, he would, he loves the fact that it, it goes all the way around the building, but if there are cars parked here, he didn't wanna rely on that as the only means to get in and off the site. So that's why he was more focused on this.
Okay.
Our other comment was on the LP tank. And the concern, I mean, it all depends on when the tank would get filled, but if it gets filled during hours of operation, you know, if the propane tank is parked, it would disappear with, with operation of the, of the drive-through.
Yeah, they're not gonna be able to do that, they're gonna have to do it on off-hours.
Okay, and, and that's.
There's, there's no other way to do that.
I mean, I, I mean, you could look at maybe moving it over here and filling it from the parking lot, but that's gonna block the parking lot as well, very limited options for your, for your propane tanks, so.
Correct.
That was a, a question that was raised as well. There are a couple of items the board could vote on, one being the residential buffer. And discussed earlier with the fence, if the board would like to make a motion to deem that buffer as suitable based on the proposed six-foot solid fence.
So move.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
The next buffer to consider is the one on Route 1 and they have two proposed trees to satisfy the landscape buffer. And they have two proposed trees to satisfy the landscape buffer requirement in that location. Someone like to make a motion to accept that?
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And the last buffer is along Edgar Ave, because there is a private old street right away in this area. And pretty limited in this direction because of the pavement and whatnot. But they have two trees proposed up in this corner that could meet the ordinance. If you'd like to consider that. Oh, they do have, I should say, they have a couple of trees proposed down in this location as well, I think, off Edgar. I think that's on your landscaping plan.
Move it's acceptable.
Is there a second to that? All those in favor? That is unanimous.
We just had commentary on the lot itself being created, that it meets the ordinance. We also had some plan markups that we forwarded to the applicant. They are, have a pending DEP site location amendment permit application in with DEP. So they'll be waiting for that, and hopefully they'll get it soon, but...
It doesn't look like it. It's been in for a while, and we're trying to get feedback.
That's a common comment we hear.
Common theme.
Yes.
Eric, I have one question for you on this drive-through. Just over here, is it possible to extend it out a little further? Just so that, like, you know, someone goes through the drive-through, and then they pull up to put stuff away and everything, just to give enough room for the next car to be dealt with?
Yeah, it's a little sharp radius there, too.
Yeah, I think we can extend that out a little bit. I mean, we're close to percentages. We can make some things work like this. So I also want to apologize, Mr. McKenzie, I didn't add in the trash barrels yet, but they're coming. We submitted it, and then my designer had noted, said, "Oh, I forgot those trash bags." Oh, Mr. McKenzie's gonna be upset at me, so... So we didn't forget about it, we'll get them. But, yeah, I think we can do that.
We did have an item for the planning board to vote on. We did get a letter from the engineer, a statement on the stormwater, and that the stormwater impacts will be decreased from the site because they are reducing the lot coverage in that area. As we know, the whole area is flooded now, and they're changing it, you know, to the better with more grass and less... It falls under the criteria of the ordinance, but the board would consider a rager because of that.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
We were looking for some draft easements, there's various easements that we needed for the site, for access easement across the parking lot area. Draft easement for the sidewalk area to increase the danger of a foul. Also, in the deed conveyance for this parcel, there should be reservations that prevent the right to tie into that stormwater system because it lets catch basin in your system ties into an existing catch basin that goes across the Wells Plaza site. And of course, they're waiting for their traffic movement permit as well with DOT. Probably, I'm guessing you'll get that before you get DEP.
I think so.
This one would need a continuance now, and I don't know what time period you'd like. We've recommended a sixty-day...
I think we can do between that. I mean, I think we're getting closer on these things, and we'll keep pushing.
We'll grant up the sixty-day extension.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. You're all set on that one. The next one is Wells Plaza.
This one as well, we have comments from the public. And we haven't got any other written comments submitted or any calls on it either. I'm driving through after the sidewalk, I think there's, there's still a dumpster over in the setback area. And that's an existing violation, it's just an incomplete approval. So that dumpster would need to be moved before the board even signs or approves the plan. So we just wanted to make note of that. We haven't been out there for a few weeks, so maybe it's moved by now. Also, an action for the board is consider a waiver for plan scale. Plan scale's at one inch to sixty, and we require, I think, one inch to forty for a site plan. But the one inch to sixty works well, so we can see the whole site on one plan.
So moved.
Second, but I just wanted to ask a question. Can we get an updated plan? Because what's shown there is not actually what's there. What's shown there is handicaps that don't meet code, but you actually do have handicaps that meet code on site. So is it possible to get an updated one?
Yes. What's shown on the floor and has been seconded, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
We noted the parking, and the parking is something that the board needs to grant a reduction in required parking. If you just take all the uses that are approved on the site, the parking that was there satisfied all those uses. But I think as we've discussed before, this whole parking lot up in this area just never gets used except for other reasons. So they are asking for a reduction in parking, resulting in five hundred and three parking spaces versus what's required. The board can grant that as there is sidewalks in the area, there's public transit in the area, there is a bus station over on the Hanaford property that's right next to this property. And they are proposing to extend that sidewalk from Route one into the property. And that's a reason or a basis for the board to give that reduction in parking.
Didn't they add some parking spots out there?
More spots to the back. Yes, they added, in the total of the five hundred and four, I think our reference, includes the increased or recognized employee parking all along the backside. So that added, I think, fifty-three spaces or somewhere around that area.
I think so.
But the total reduction from what was there is still eighty-something.
We also, when the original plan was done and they had the parking up top there, we had given them the allowance for the movie theater because it operated at off-hours. So what happens if that movie theater changes to something else?
Well, if it changed to...
They wrote on there that they would have to meet the new ordinance because, I mean, we gave them... I was on the board then, I'm pretty sure. And we gave them the variance on the waiver because it was not the same hours that all the stores operating.
And that's one of the other significant bases of giving the reduction of parking.
Yep.
Is if there are multiple uses that have multiple times of operation. That's one of the other criteria for it. And certainly, if the movie theater changed its use and came in as a restaurant or something like that, that was...
Restaurant or a store or something like that, they'd have to have the correct amount of parking spaces.
Yeah, they'd have to come in for an amendment for that change in use, and that would give us a chance to look at that.
Hopefully, that'll keep the movie theater there forever.
It's nice to have that in town.
Yep.
Yep.
Move to approve the reduction in parking requirement.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
We had a few very minor plan markups. Yeah, again, we had the cross easements between the properties that we'd like to see the draft of. Sidewalk construction, deadlines and triggers. That's something that we do as performance guarantee notes on the final plan. But we were considering that the owner, of course, of this lot or the representative for the owner, attend the pre-construction meeting for Starbucks. I have the feeling that probably Starbucks will be building all the sidewalks because it's gonna be part of their movement permit with DOT. But of course, this sidewalk is on the Plaza property, so they should party to the pre-construction meeting. And they, they'll have an easement to put the sidewalk there. But that was one of the conditions we were thinking of to put on the final plan, is they have to attend the pre-construction meeting or have a representative there attending and setting the deadline for that sidewalk construction. Typically, we'd set it to, you know, prior to the occupancy of the Starbucks. There is some monumentation for the new lot corners to be set. That, again, probably tie it to occupancy because the whole site is gonna be dug up for the construction. Probably wouldn't make sense to set those monuments now, and when there's a chance they could get disturbed. Yeah, if those items get addressed, they'd be a step closer to approval. Again, this will be dependent on DOT and DEP approval. So we recommend the planning board continue this also for sixty days.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. You're all set, sir?
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on the agenda this evening, as well as the Gunfoot Resort. Import results of sidewalk. Would you like to tell everybody who you are, please? Mike, you have results for us?
Yes. Yes, the results of the sidewalk, we attended it on Saturday. So we just had it on the table or front view for tonight's meeting. So it was held at eight AM on Saturday morning, May third. It was partly cloudy, fifty-two degrees. We had multiple planning board members there. We had three representatives of the owner were present, myself was present, Noah Butters were there. The Route one buffer itself looked good as it is. When we walked out back, the propane tank had already been relocated out of the hotel buffer area. The rear buffers look good. There is that playground that's in the rear buffer area, just a portion of it. But the area isn't, it's very well screened on the abutting properties themselves and the existing vegetation out there. We looked at the shoreline zone area, and we're looking to identify possible disturbances of previous vegetation. And there were really no stumps or way to identify if anything had been cut in the shoreline zone. So I think the method of addressing that was to add, I'm gonna get the plan up there, was to add some no-cut buffers. There we go. So we walked back here, and this is that playground I mentioned that's half in the buffer, half out, but the area is mulched and partly landscaped. We were worried about some shoreline vegetation disturbance here. But there was still a really good tree canopy from this one big tree and from the trees along the brook. So I think the resolution of that would be to post signage as no-cut area, maybe twenty-five feet from the brook area, and continue that all along the backside. And have that area just regrow naturally. Some of it's grass now, so if the buffer signs go up, then mowing of that grass would need to stop and just let it re-vegetate naturally with what we grow there. As we walked along the back, there was some debris and junk material over beside the river or brook, and that needs to be removed. That took us to the dumpster area, and looking at this access road all the way through, which is gravel, and it's been gravel for a long time, but it's a very loose gravel material. And it appeared that the dumpster trucks unload the dumpster or empty the dumpsters, and then they loop around the site because it's very difficult to back out of this area close to the building. And that's digging up the gravel and can cause future erosion, sediments to go into the brook. So I think the resolution to that as discussed on site was to potentially move the dumpsters to some other location that would work. And posting that area along the brook as a no-disturbed, limiting, you know, just to the access road remaining. That access road would serve for access to the storage bays that are underneath the hotel units and also for fire access to go around the entire building. So it definitely does serve a purpose and should be considered to be maintained and stay there. It was discussed maybe putting up gates or chains at either end of it to prevent the dumpster trucks from going through, prevent other access from going through except for vehicles for the owners themselves and maybe emergency access.
Yeah, if you're recommended a fire gate, not chains.
Yeah, well, I think...
At the end of the building so that people can't drive around it, because the erosion was happening on the other side.
Right where it was steep. That was right around that corner was the area I think we were most concerned about.
Yeah, we were saying a fire gate right at the end of the last door of the building. So you can come down around the spot, so you can't go around the rest of it.
Right.
Yep. Something that, you know, the fire department could access and use with a toolbox. Yeah, several different dumpster options were talked about, whether we could put them, you know, up in the corner of the parking area, sacrifice a couple of parking spaces. The thought there was, you know, you'd have to level out, put a concrete pad there to help prevent the stormwater that goes through those dumpsters from going into the brook. Looked at this corner over here as potential dumpster location as well, and looked maybe to the back in that area for a dumpster location. Think the owners were gonna talk to their, to the solid waste haulers and see what input they may have. Question we had on this corner was whether the overhead wires would interfere with getting the dumpsters. There's methods to do it, but it could be difficult. Or just present a hazard that we could avoid by putting it somewhere else. Also observed a generator on the side of the building that needs to be added to the plan. There were other conditions on the abutting property that have reported to the code office, and they'll be pursuing, but doesn't have an impact to the site.
The invasive vines and species on the back of the building?
Ah, yes, I did not put that in the report. But yeah, there was at least one or two trees right on the back side. It didn't look like it was overrun yet, like we've seen on other properties. And it could be, you know, taken care of now before it does spread and start killing all the trees.
Because if they, if those vines kill the trees, you still have to replace the trees, so...
Yeah, especially in the shoreline zone. So that's what I had had for the sidewalk report. The memo itself, we talked about the shoreline zone. The board could consider a couple of the buffer items. Typically, you wait till after a public hearing, but I think as we discussed at the sidewalk, it might need a public hearing based on its internal buffers to the hotel. It didn't seem like the buffers were impacting any of Butters. And they're gonna work on a dumpster relocation. But eventually, the board will have to vote on the buffers at the rear, buffers at the front, in the shoreline zone area, the buffers associated with that. I guess the first item we'd ask you to determine on item two, which is down further in the memo, but we recommend they find the application complete. We did do a completeness review during the staff review committee process on this. So we would recommend deeming it complete.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
And next, now that we deem it complete, what are your considerations on a public hearing, whether one's necessary or not?
I don't think one's necessary.
It's all on property, so I don't think...
Move to the public. Hearing's not recording.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous as well.
With those two items done, we can go back to the buffer determinations. One was the buffer along the back corner areas. So that area we were discussing and looked at first on our sidewalk, really. So this whole twenty-five-foot hotel buffer in this area that was, you know, cleared at some point in the past, mostly by the previous owner, I think, all by the previous owner, as well as the playground relocation. It was located here. It was located further out of the buffer than it was originally. So if the board would consider the existing conditions as adequate buffer, including the partial portion of the playground that's within it.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous as well.
The landscape buffer along the front on Route one would be the next buffer to consider. I think we were, you know, considering whether a couple of trees are appropriate in the front. It's mostly grass, and I think there's a few little shrubs. There is some trees down in this corner. But if the board wanted to consider trees, that's something they could add to the plan. I guess if they were considering a dumpster location in this area, we would wanna see that and see how that's screened before making the decision.
I think you need to see the plan for that first before you can determine that.
And I think the same with the buffer along the brook. We'd wanna see the no-cut buffer signs on the plan before making that determination.
And what the plan is for the invasive species as well.
Those two buffer votes can wait until, of course, the next meeting when we have more shown on the plan form and the dumpster location is determined. And we didn't have any other recommended actions of the board other than continuing for up to sixty days, and we can work with the applicants on the dumpster location and their buffer plans, and they can come back when they're ready.
Yeah, we're gonna look at the buffer requirement along Route one because it's not too sturdy.
Yes, we did look at that with the code office. And the language, the language in the ordinance says if more than, it says for a two-story building, a minimum setback of six... it says for a two-story building, a minimum step back of sixty feet. We do have a two-story building located here, but the second floor is a residential use and we did have two applications before that were different than a hotel use and the board did not require the sixty-foot for the second story if it wasn't a hotel use. Um, so it was on two different applications in the past, to be consistent with that, it would only be a forty-foot landscape buffer in the front.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, that's just an interpretation of the ordinance, if, if you differ with that, but I did talk to the code office.
You're okay with it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and Shannon provided the two other examples that I didn't recall that we have made very similar determination on in the past.
Move to continue the workshop up to sixty days.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous. See you again.
The next step is really to decide, you know, where, where the best location for the dumpster is. Uh, we'll mark up a plan for the signage, for the buffering along the brook and what we'd like to see on the buffer signs. Um.
And just with, with their, sure what they're gonna do with invasive.
With all the vines and things.
Yep, we're gonna put that in the notes in the document. We have a, a good note that we've used on two other projects in the past about eliminating invasive species and continued maintenance on it within the shoreline zone, give you those notes from the other plans.
What about the fire gate, you been put for that on the plan?
Yes, you do need to, one of the notes that we were recommending for the plan was that, uh, by a certain deadline, we haven't really recommended one yet, but maybe September thirtieth. Because this access road wasn't on the old original hotel, uh, site itself, you have to go to the ZBA to get it approved because it goes through the shoreline zone. Um, but as we discussed, it, it provides great fire access and it's your only means of access to the storage bays underneath the hotel. Um, but you will have to still go to the ZBA for that.
And the, the sooner you, I know their calendar's filling up, so the sooner you apply to the ZBA, the better. If I'm, I'm ready for, uh, fire chief, yeah, I got back. Okay.
You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
The next item on the agenda this evening is Bibber Memorial Chapel. Good evening.
Good evening. Madison Allen, we're representing Spago Technics.
Welcome.
I'll see you from Spago Technics.
How are you? Mike, you have comments for us?
Yes, um, the board's looked at this a couple of times in the past and at the last meeting, there were just a few items for the applicant to add to the plan. Um, there was a revision to the stormwater design, um, that was provided. I reviewed it, reviewed the stormwater cap so that presents a better stormwater treatment really than, than on the original plan. Um, the reason why they had to change it is they found the existing soil conditions weren't as good as originally hoped for, uh, or the original soils may have been wrong really. Uh, so that change has been made. Uh, generator, the potential generator location has been added to the plan. Um, opposed trees and plantings have been adjusted, the locations have been adjusted slightly to avoid the stormwater features that are on the site. Um, and the two trees along chapel road itself have been moved back. Uh, that was discussed at the last meeting a little bit. It wasn't felt that they would interfere with site distance, but we looked at the plan again and they were really close to the existing culvert that runs along the front of the property, so they've shifted those to the very back of the fifteen-foot landscape buffer. Um, so they've made all those changes to the, for the plans. Um, the board already voted on all those items at the last meeting. Um, so we, this is an amendment to a previous site plan, so we don't have to go through all the items of one forty-five, seventy-five, you know, A through N. Uh, but there is a draft findings of fact that when you're packet, they go through each of the items for traffic, extreme breakers, odor, glare, stormwater, road control, setbacks and screening, water quality, preservation landscape, refuge disposal, water supply and sewer disposal, and fire safety. And all those criteria have been discussed at previous meetings, um, and voted on by the board or represented on the plan. Um, so we were recommending the board take a vote to approve the findings and sign the plans at the new meeting.
So moved. Motion, second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous. We'll sign them at the end of the meeting and you can pick them up tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're all set?
Right.
Did you bring the plans up?
Have you got your plans treated? You're all set. The next two items on the agenda are continued. Mike?
Yes, um, Hawx Nest, the applicant wanted some time to work on septic locations. Uh, they have a couple of army board issues they, they have to work on as well for the wetland till permitting. And then the other project was R and L properties and, uh, they did get us new architecturals, but on, uh, late Thursday, Friday morning is when they got them, so not enough time to get them on this agenda, but they'll be back for next meeting. Uh, neither of those need a continuance, they both fall under previous continuance periods that the board approved.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is Goodell subdivision. Welcome.
Peter, I was asked to make some amendments to my plan, adjustments. I believe they've all been done.
Uh, the, the, most of the plan changes were done, there's a few items that the board has to make determinations on and some other information that we need, like the test pit logs, um, looking for draft documents or at least a note on the plan for preliminary approval purposes for the maintenance of the road. We have that existing maintenance agreement for, for Brook, uh, for Green Brook Lane itself, but for the new road, you know, how is, is the new road maintenance gonna interact with the existing maintenance agreement? So we need some, some plan in place for that, documentation on that. Uh, but a couple of items, uh, many of the items were, um, addressed with the last planned revision we got. Um. Couple items we had for the board to review and consider was, um, contours. So the board needs to determine a contour or interval. Uh, they provided two-foot contours on, uh, the area of the new lots being proposed. Uh, they didn't show contours on the existing house lot area. Um, but the, the contours that are available online at least are from two thousand and twelve and because of the home construction, they're not gonna match to two thousand and twelve data. Um, so one item is for the board, do you wanna see contours on this existing developed area or not? Um, nothing's proposed to be changed there as part of the subdivision approval. Uh, so two-part, I guess vote would be the board to consider whether two-foot contours are adequate. And the other part of that would be, do you need to see contours of the existing developed lot area?
So you're fine with the two-foot?
Yes, the two-foot would be good for, you know, for these being standard lots, the size they are and the fact that most of the road is already constructed, you know, for those two lots. The two-foot contours, we feel is adequate.
And you're fine with the, you're fine with the existing plant you have?
Yes.
So move to approve both requests. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Hey, Mike, did you do a calculation on, uh, wetlands to, uh, dry land in each lot?
Uh, we haven't got the calculations for it, but, um, but just looking at them, it's over the fifty percent, but that was one of the items we were asking for is the actual calculation. Um, this lot has the wetlands that go through the middle of it, um, but just visually it, it appears to be well over the fifty percent. Well, not well over, but significant.
Somebody's gotta do them that, that.
Yeah, we need that calculation. The other lot just has a little.
Just the end there, but I noticed that the, the lot on the left there, lot, uh, what is it, lot, lot one thirty-one, is, uh, quite, quite a bit of wetland in there.
And it, it has good wetland there and, I mean, good upland there and good upland there. I'm sure it'll be over the fifty percent, but we do need to see that calculation and that was one of the, the items we listed. It's not a deduction from the lot area, it's just that not more than fifty percent of the lot can be wetland.
I, I think he was pretty fussy on meeting, meeting requirements, uh, maybe make the lot bigger and everything else. Make it work.
Yeah, if, if the lots were too much smaller, this one would be, even though we don't deduct wetlands directly from the density cap to meet the fifty percent requirement, you wanna be at that size anyways. Um, I guess we still were, uh, you know, wondering about this, you know, road you have proposed over here still. You know, if that's still something you wanna propose, this lot's street frontage can be met right out here.
Well, something I wanna propose, but I don't wanna get older. No need to.
Well, yeah, exactly, if, if, if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna propose building it, then, then you should remove it from the plan because it, yeah, if, if it's on the plan, then we have to have a design for it. Um, and it has to be designed, if it, if it shows on the plan, that means you are gonna build it. So if you're not gonna build it now and you don't need it for street frontage, it shouldn't be on the plan, basically. When you are ready to do something else with the remaining land and you do need to build it, then you'd be coming in for an amendment and we'd have to look at the road design at that point.
I basically just did that for a fifty-foot right-of-way, just to, just to have it on the plan.
But you don't need it for creating street frontage for this lot.
No.
So if it doesn't serve a purpose.
Put it as a fifty-foot right-of-way instead of a road.
Yeah.
Don't call it a road, call it a right-of-way. Doesn't have to be anything at that point.
Well, we'd wanna, we'd wanna specifically name it as a non-street then.
It's just a right-of-way. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a right-of-way, that's all it is.
Yep, yeah, as long as we clearly noted on the plan, that would be okay.
Yeah, just take off the road and just a fifty-foot wide right-of-way.
Well, serve who?
To serve.
You can't create a right-of-way to yourself, so, you know, we have the remaining land on the back. If, if a right-of-way is being created there, we have to know who gets the benefit of that right-of-way. So are these lots getting the benefit of it? Is this lot getting the benefit of it? Um, you know, it serves this lot, so it, it can't have the benefit of it, so. Yeah, you can't just create a paper right-of-way, you have, someone has to have.
That's, that's all I wanted to do.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna keep the land itself, right? The, the, the backland right now?
Yeah.
So, so you wouldn't even need to have the right-of-way?
You don't need a right-of-way, you, you own it all, you don't need a right-of-way.
Just take the road off the, take it off, that's all you need to do.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah, cause legally you can't give a right-of-way to yourself.
Right, so just take the road off, cause you can go any way you want on there.
Yeah.
Right?
True.
And then in the, in the future, if you want to create another street here to divide off or subdivide off a couple more lots, then you just would do it at that time.
Yeah.
Um, as I mentioned, we were looking for the test pit logs for the lots.
That's all I sent, man.
Oh, we didn't see them.
Yeah. They should have been with the original paperwork.
The logs weren't there, the test pits are shown on the original plan. Um, but I don't think we've ever received actual soils data logs for it. Uh, we double-checked on it, but, um. Uh, we are also looking for, well, we talked about the road already. Um, if there are any trees greater than twenty-four inch in diameter on the property, I think you had a lot, so there probably aren't any.
They really do, right?
Yep, if there aren't any, then we just wanna note on the plan saying there aren't any. Um. Fire protection, what's your plan for fire protection? The ordinance does require onsite fire protection. Um, it's really not enough lots that you'd wanna do a cistern or a pond. So the only other way to meet that requirement is to require sprinkler systems. Um, you have your existing house, that you, you don't have sprinklers there, or?
No.
No.
Well, I have a brook right next to it.
Yeah, and, and they can throw a suction line in there.
Yeah.
But it, it's not something the fire department is gonna recognizes. Permanent fire protection for the subdivision. So for the new lots, those new lots, unless you're planning to build a, a cistern or a fire pond, then they'd have to have sprinkler systems to meet that requirement, but. There's really no other option.
Yeah.
But your existing house, we'd have to note on the plan that the existing house isn't required to have sprinklers. Um, I guess the question comes up with the fire protection for that. And well, yeah, yeah, we'll get input from fire chief on that, I guess. It would be very expensive and difficult to retrofit your house for sprinkler systems, so that, that's not really feasible for that. But we'll figure out how to note that, take care of it. So, yeah, the word, as I was saying, there are a few items to be addressed on the plan for changes, but they're getting to the point where they're, where they're pretty minor. If the playboard one, consider making the planning office to complete this agent, then when he addresses those items, we can schedule a preliminary public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
You sent me a list, but what I have to.
Yeah, most, most of it's in the memo already, but some of the stuff in the memo you, you have already addressed, so we'll do a.
Have a good night. Next item on the agenda is Breeze Landing subdivision. Welcome.
Good evening. Jeff Lebo with Civil Consultants, Michael Green of the developer for the project.
Mike, you have comments for us on this?
Um, yes, this project as well has been to the board many times in the past where the final approval stage or a couple of items at the last meeting were being addressed. Uh, one was having the document reviewed by the town attorney and myself, uh, who produced the memo, the senior package on that. Uh, we have had several correspondence with the town attorney afterwards. We got a revised version of the easements proposed by the town for the sidewalk area, for the fishing easement along the brook. Um, and I believe all the documents that presented satisfy, uh, the town attorney comments. Uh, my comments were already satisfied on one of the earlier versions, but he had a couple more. So those have been addressed. Uh, in the memo, the final version of the sidewalk note is, is, uh, put on the plan. Uh, specifies the amount we did get, uh, construction details for the sidewalk, uh, as stamped concrete that the Public Works Director reviewed and approved. And, uh, also cost estimate for the sidewalk itself and the bridge to cross the brook were also reviewed by myself in Public Works and the number that the engineer presented was reasonable. Um, and we added ten percent to that for inflation, um, so that has been addressed. We had proposed note thirty-seven as well, that the sidewalk easement be conveyed to the town prior to the first occupancy. Um, the applicant agreed to that as well. So we have gone through all the various compliance items. They changed the planting specifications to Douglas fir versus originally it was labeled as arborvitae on the plan. Um, one item that we didn't get till today, but we did get today is the final capacity letter from the city district. Um, we still had a question on who would own sewer main hall number four, uh, but that's something that really is between, uh, San, it was up to the San Francisco.
Yeah.
So we put a condition that that be resolved prior to the pre-construction meeting. The public parking space along Route one would be constructed by the developer between the town and the state and the crews for that fishing easement. Yeah, so with all those items addressed, we were recommending the planning board deem the application as compliant, so.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Um, in your packet was the proposed findings of fact and decisions. Uh, this is, of course, a new subdivision versus an amendment. It was required to go through each of the criteria and vote on it separately. Uh, so the first page of the findings is just a description of the project. It goes into the project history. Oh, you have the findings?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, on page three is the beginning of section two oh two twelve, paragraph D, which the first item to vote on is compliance with the comprehensive plan. We recommend the planning board finds that that standard is a.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Uh, item B is retention of open space. Uh, they are providing ninety, uh, sixty, uh, sixty-seven percent open space. Um, note seventeen on sheet L O one describes the open space to be maintained by the condominiums association. It's depicted on the plans as well, it's approved for passive recreation uses. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard is a.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Uh, paragraph C is on lots, there are no blocks proposed, there's no lots proposed. So we recommend the planning board finds that that standard is a.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Paragraph D is lots, um, there are no proposed lots, it's a condominium, uh, but the existing lot is configured in a way in, that meets the ordinance as well as our density requirements as well. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that paragraph D standards have been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
On page six is paragraph E utilities. Utilities are proposed to be underground as required by the ordinance and specified in note twenty-one. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that the standards of paragraph E have been met.
So move. Is there a second, all those in favor, that is unanimous.
Paragraph F is required improvements. Uh, this has several sections to it, one is monumentation. The planning board approved the proposed, existing and proposed monumentation at a previous meeting. Uh, another section is water supply. We have a letter from the water district approving the project for capacity and the final water system design. Uh, the fire chief approved the proposed hydrant location that was located on the plans. Uh, this also includes sewage disposal, which is through the sanitary district. And as I said, we got a final capacity letter today. Uh, the design had been previously approved by the superintendent of the sanitary district. Uh, this paragraph also includes stormwater management. Uh, DEP approval was granted for the stormwater design, it was also reviewed by itself. It clearly well depicts the proposed stormwater system. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that that whole section standard has been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
That takes us all the way to page twelve, paragraph G streets. Uh, Maggie Way is a proposed private street that goes through the condominium project. The planning board determined the proposed construction standards for two oh one ten G. Based on that, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard has been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Uh, we're at page thirteen now, paragraph H, learning features. Uh, this section has mostly to do with the road control measures, needing best management practices. Uh, everything on the plans coincides and meets those standards. Previously stated, they have got their DEP approval for stormwater. This section also covers dedication and maintenance of common open space. Uh, the condominium association will be maintaining the open space as discussed earlier and noted in note seventeen on the plans. Based on that information, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard is met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
That takes us to page seventeen, which is section two oh two thirteen, performance standards. Uh, on sheet L one, there's notes twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-six and thirty-seven that are the performance standards for the project. It, those cover uh, performance guarantees that are needed at the pre-construction meeting as well as different criteria that need to be met prior to the issuance of either building permit or occupancy permits. Based on those notes on the plan, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard has been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
That takes us to page twenty of the fangings and this goes over section two oh two two. Uh, paragraph A is considering impacts of the subdivision. Based on all the previous findings that have been made, we recommend the planning board finds that paragraph A has been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Paragraph B is the technical and financial capacity of the applicant. Based on the performance standards that have been set, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard has been met.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
That takes us to paragraph C on page twenty-one regarding uh, flood zone and activity within the flood zone. The plans depict existing flood zones on the property. Um, the bridge that's designed to access it has been designed for in excess of a hundred year storm event. Based on the information provided, we recommend the planning board finds that that standard has been met.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.
Uh, that leads us into the standard conditions of approval and the special conditions of approval. Uh, based on those, uh, that are all listed in the findings. And everything just referred to on the plans to date. We recommend the planning board approve, find, assess in the plans and sign both at the end of the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous. You'll sign the plans at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mike, on Hoxness, are they gonna move all the wells in front of the lots?
Uh, what they're gonna do is leave all the setbacks, so that they have a uh, primary setback in the location for many feet apart.
Yep.
So they're gonna do more test pits and put the reserves right next to the primaries. And that'll open up the well entrances, so the wells will last longer.
Yeah, but they're still gonna have to locate them, right, before they drill?
Well, I think it's gonna, they're gonna leave one lot, they still need, should get survey and location on. But even that one, once they combine the primaries and reserves right next to each other, there'll be a lot of options for well. All the, all the any mirrors tight as they show nowhere. Yeah, under our business, we have a copy of the staff reduced meeting agenda. Um, and we also have a notice for on May fifteen. There's a Zoom webinar available for anyone wanting to participate in, um, workforce help.
Mike, before we adjourn ahead of question, um, someone from town came in and asked me, um, an ordinance change. Um, the board selectmen has to send that to the the planning board to review, or they can choose to?
Any land use, so anything that's in two oh two, one forty-five. Basically, those two sections are ordinance, maybe a couple other ones. If it's involved with land use regulation, then by state law, it has to go through the planning board as well as the selectmen, you're going to go on the ballot. There are like licensing and some other ones that aren't land use related, that they can just hold a public hearing on and go down and change. But anything land use related has to, has to go through.
Okay, so specifically this question goes to the um, marijuana bylaw question that's on the ballot. Um, we were in charge with asking whether or not we thought that the current medicinal should be turned over to um, uh, recreation. We voted unanimously no, forwarded to them, and they decided to send it to the votes. But we were not asked about whether or not these facilities could sell plants. And yet that's in the the um, question on the ballot. Has that violated the spirit of the the law? Is that something that we should ask the town attorney to look at?
Um, you know, the, so what, like you said, it was unanimous vote by the planning board not to put the ordinance forward because it didn't meet the six criteria for a zone, when this change. You know, in the land use process, the planning board has to be involved, but it doesn't have veto power. So, I mean, you voted the way you felt.
Right, I, I understood, but but the but the question is, we weren't asked to look at whether or not marijuana plants could be sold. And that, what I'm saying is that, based on the way I understand the ordinance, the way you explained it to me, that we needed to have been asked that before that, before that, you know, so that we could hold a public hearing on that. So the due process hasn't been followed.
Well, the the language for the ordinance change, the board did look at and make revisions to and comment on, and that was all done prior to the public hearing. So the actual language of the ordinance changes, the board did, you know, the planning board did look at and make comment on, and that's what the board of selectmen voted to put on the ballot. So that was published before the public hearing and is subject of discussion. I mean, your ultimate decision was that you didn't want that language to go on the ballot. Um, but that language was published before the public hearing and that's the language that's going on the ballot. So I think that's all valid, I, I'm trying to think of.
I do have, I have a follow-up question. I do have a follow-up question, so when you look at the rest of the warrant article, most of them are on the budget, and you have a recommendation by the budget committee and you have a recommendation by the select board. Why isn't there the same thing for ordinance changes where the planning board's vote is recorded as well as the select board's vote? So it shows to people what the planning board is thinking and what the select board is thinking?
I think that should be tried to keep, it's actually still in the charter, um, that are budget items that we voted the budget committee being included on the ballot, so it's specific in the charter. There's nothing in the charter, you know, for that for for land use for the exchanges. But I think that's a valuable change to make to the charter.
So who makes changes to the charter?
That's a very complicated part process, actually, and it'll be, it's, needs to come up really soon because you're supposed to do it every ten years. Um, and that has to be a special committee, I I guess I wanna call it committee that's formed. Um, it has to be a combination of people appointed by the board of selectmen and people that are voted on by the public. So when that charter commission, actually, it's not a committee, it's a commission. When that charter commission gets appointed, it'll start the review process on changing elements of the charter. And this public hearing's required, of course. But it's a unique commission that's formed through both appointees and publicly elected people as well.
So I'm gonna make a motion that that recommendation be forwarded to the select board into the people they appoint to the commission when that occurs. For a charter change to document both votes of the planning board and the select board on these ordinance changes on the vote.
Now, second. All those in favor, that is unanimous.
The other thing is, Mike.
I was voting for it immediately.
If this passes, if it happens to pass, do they have to come back to us for site plan changes?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
None of them meet the parking requirements.
Parking requirements and, and at that point, we, I know that we were discussing um, their waste and stuff like that, but if they're gonna be growing and selling plants out of there, how are they gonna get rid of the the dead plants and stuff?
I didn't remember the plants were included, I have to reread it.
Yeah, well, that's, 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 that's what it said, that's what, that's what threw me off was because we didn't, we didn't discuss that. And, you know, that's a whole different, it's a whole different, I guess you'd call it industry, really.
Like nursery?
Yeah, there you go.
You know, I, I think that's in the existing language, actually, I think that's the existing language for medical dispensary.
Medical can't sell plants, can they?
They can.
Really?
Yeah, in case your patient, you know, medical, medical needs, they sell the plants to the patients that have a medical card.
See, I thought that's why they had the, the, the um, home delivery to.
They have that too.
Yeah.
But there is nowhere on record that shows or tells the voters that the planning board was opposed to this.
Unanimous.
Amendment.
And I, I think that should be on every land use question, that's always been my thought.
So how do we let the public know how we feel?
Right now.
I know, but not everybody's watching this.
Yep. No, everyone watches these meetings, it's, it's videoing television.
I know some people do.
Any other business besides signing plans?
Lot to sign.
Move to.
Adjourn signed findings to facts and plans.
Second.
All those in favor, that is unanimous.